Good morning, welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It is Wednesday, January 21st, 2015. We're in the Senator hearing room at Courthouse Square in Salem, Oregon. We begin our meetings with a pledge of allegiance, if you would join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have anyone signed up for public comment today, and we do have a public hearing scheduled at 9:30 on storm water maintenance, so between now and then, we have a consent calendar and we have three items listed, but we're going to pull a couple of those off. So Commissioner, I think you were going to make a motion.
Madam Chair, I would. I'd make a motion because apparently not ready to pull two items off our action calendar agenda this morning. They're both having to do with renting space at 1320 Capitol Street Northeast for the extension service and with the Oregon Farm Bureau. So I'd make that motion to remove those two items.
And I'll second your motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to remove items two and three from the board's action items. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those are removed. So we better have a really scintillating presentation on the CAFER here. It looked like they're ready to go. All right, so let's move ahead with the consent calendar.
Then Madam Chair, if I could, I'd make a motion to approve the consent calendar this morning on it. Under Health, approve Amendment 5 to the contract for services with Northwest Permanente to add $7,500 to incoming funds and extend the contract until March 21st, 2015. Public Works, approve Amendment Number 2 to the intergovernmental agreement with City of Salem for traffic signal maintenance, planning and design. Receive a hearings officer's decision denying administrative review case AR-14003, Nunez Wanderer, Clerk's File 5690. And Tax Collector, approve an order authorizing a property tax refund in the amount of $36,106.60 to Wilco Farmers.
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
They are all approved. So now we are, one item under action before our public hearing at 9:30 is to approve the fiscal year 2013-14 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, lovingly known as the CAFER. So we have Jeff White, Cynthia Grenatier, Chuck Swank, Devin Esch, is that how you say that? Ryan Pascarella from Grove Mueller and Swank, PC. So why don't you all, whoever wants to come forward first? Cynthia, is that you?
I'm a Grenatier.
Yeah, I'm a Grenatier.
Sorry if I butchered your names there. I'll have to listen more carefully next time. So how do I say that?
Pascarella.
Pascarella, all right. It's a hard Q-U. I should know that, I taught French.
Obviously, well, not obviously. I'm Chuck Swank with Grove Mueller and Swank. And you know, Cynthia, do you have any remarks you want to start with before I sound off?
Oh, no.
I want to give you all.
There's questions.
I need you to, excuse me, pull the microphones a little closer apparently, we're getting...
The one I tried to get rid of.
Is that better?
Yes.
Does that work?
A little bit more if you wouldn't, Chuck.
Okay. How's that?
There.
Okay. I'll do my best. We are pleased to be here this morning. The real reason we're here is if the Commission has any questions of us whatsoever in relation to the audit we performed for June 30, 2014. You have seen a copy, I assume, in accord, or in, along with our opinions on the financial statements, which are unqualified, and that should make you happy, or that should be your expectation. Audit went smoothly. I believe if you did a comparison, the independent auditor's report date is earlier this year, right?
A little.
A little earlier this year. In addition, we also have issued the opinions on the three service districts and the Cable Regulatory Commission, all prior to December 31st. So those are all completed. The one item left is to complete the single audit, make the federal government happy, and that has been scheduled, actually it's been started, and that will be completed next four weeks?
Yeah.
Basically, in the next four weeks, the single audit will be completed, and that will complete the audit procedures that you engaged us to perform for the year ended June 30, 14, at that time. Along with the opinions on the financial statements, which are contained in the document, we, and you gave them an electronic copy of the governance letter.
I distributed a hard copy.
Okay, you distributed hard copies. That's our communication to you as the governing body. It's our platform, if you please, that we can communicate any issues that came up during the process of performing the audit, any disagreements, if there were any, and there were not, with management, a recognition of what are considered technical audit areas. Generally, those are items that are estimates in the financial statements rather than numbers that are, that are hard numbers. They're all searching.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. That letter, if you were to read through it, assuming first you could find it, does not have any points that we believe need the Commissioner's attention. There is one attached past journal entry. It's not material to the financial statements that has to do with, with the Oregon Garden and costs incurred almost a decade ago. So that, that's attached. But I will come back to the Oregon Garden because I know Commissioner Bertano had a question about that when I was up there. That is basically how the audit went. Please, if there's any questions from the Commission or John, we are more than pleased to respond. I'll try to get back to the mic.
So maybe Cynthia, can you just walk through what is included in the report for someone who might be listening?
In the whole paper?
Yeah, just what sections are in there, what kinds of things they can find. You don't have to name all of them, but just give us some highlights. And I always, when Cynthia brings me the book, I always tell her I enjoy the data in the back. That's my favorite part. So just tell us a little bit about what's in there.
Okay.
I would like to compliment both Cynthia and Jeff and the people that, individuals, employees that support them, because this is no easy document to put together every year, and the finance staff, and particularly the person on my left, puts in some fairly significant hours making sure this document gets done and then methodically goes through it. This is one, I won't say it's air-free, I don't dare use that term, but this is one of the more air-free documents that we receive to proofread. I mean, it really is, shows a sincere effort.
Thank you. We know. Thank you for highlighting that.
Thank you, Chuck. Well, so the CAFER is divided into four sections, the introductory section, the financial section, the statistical section, and then there's just a two-page section at the end, which is the auditor's opinion on compliance with Oregon minimum standards. So the introductory section has the transmittal letter, which is from the finance department, and just covers some introductory information about the county and an explanation about what's in the financial statements. There's a list of the elected officials and organization chart of the county, and a copy of our certificate for excellence in financial reporting on the previous year's CAFER, and we have again submitted this year's financial statements for review by the Government Finance Officers Association as part of their program.
I would like to comment that, representing the quality of this document, how many GFOA findings did you get back from their review? And this is reviewed by professionals outside the state of Oregon. They review these financial statements and come back with their points or issues or findings. How many did you have?
We only had one last year. That's really good.
That's, again, representative of the quality of the document.
They go through these with a fine-tooth comb.
Yes. Commissioner Cameron has a question.
May I, Madam Chair? Thank you. Chuck, what would be an average of findings in somebody's document like this? I mean, one compared to...
I usually see about five, and I've seen a lot more than that. We like to believe, because we read these too, that we find everything. We don't always, but I'd say five is a fairly normal average for the number of points that come back from the review.
Thank you.
Thanks. Go ahead, Cynthia.
The financial section starts with auditor's opinion, and then there's management's discussion and analysis, which is a high-level overview that's required to be in the financial statements, and the kinds of things that are covered in there are in accordance with government standards. They just give some highlights, an overview of what's in the financial statements, and some key items about our capital assets and our long-term debt outstanding. So for fiscal year 2013-14, some of the key things that happened during the year were we issued some additional debt. We completed the Courthouse Square remediation. Those were some of the key items that get mentioned in the discussion and analysis. There's also some comparative graphs that show how revenues and expenditures are broken up by different categories. Then after the discussion and analysis are the basic financial statements. Those are the required financial statements. There's entity-wide financial statements, which are consolidation of all of the county's funds, including the service districts, and there are fund financial statements, which are more on a budgetary basis of accounting. Then there's quite a few pages of footnotes with all the required disclosures that are an essential part of the financial statements. And after that are all the combining schedules and budgetary schedules that show compliance with Oregon budget law. That pretty much takes you through the financial section. Then there's the statistical section, which has, for most schedules, either 10 years of comparative information or a comparison between the current year and, I think it's nine years ago.
Nine years ago.
Yeah. But there's, there's a lot of information related to property taxes, because that's our primary unrestricted funding source. There's also some demographic information. It is definitely a handy reference if you kind of want to see how things have evolved at the county over the last 10 years. And then, as I mentioned, there's a final section, two-page opinion from the auditors about our compliance with Oregon minimum standards. So Oregon revised statutes require that all local governments with a certain amount of revenue have an audit every year, and there are certain things that the auditors have to look for compliance with, and if they note any non-compliance, that goes in there. Two-page opinion. That's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Nice overview, thank you. John, did you want to add anything to the conversation?
Yes, I would like to. You know, when I came here in '03, and I want to use that as an example of why I think it's important for the board to read certain sections in here, I think the statistical analysis is very important for us. But when I came here, there was a discussion about how the county was in a deficit situation. There was some argument about how big a deficit was, 2 million, 6 million. So I immediately went to the CAFER, and I found out that we weren't in a deficit position. In fact, we had substantial ending fund balance in the general fund. I also went back, because it's something I do every time, I look at the footnotes. And there was a footnote in there about these bonds that I didn't understand. So I went to the then-financial person working for the county, he's not here anymore, and I asked about those bonds, and, and I didn't get a very good answer. And it turns out, they were the Oregon Garden bonds, and there were a lot of requirements in the bond covenants that were not being met. And so I brought that to the board. I also brought the fact that we did have a fairly healthy balance in the general fund. So I preface that by saying the CAFER is a very important document to read if you want to know about the finances of Marion County. I think there are two things that I always look at in addition to statistics. One is the management discussion analysis, because in that part of the CAFER, you really get a good overview for a layman's view of the county's finances. It's easy to read, it has all the information you'd really want that's not in the statistical table. And then the footnotes. The footnotes will let you know about some very interesting things in the budget, or in the county's finances. And so I, I think the average layperson should read the management discussion analysis and the footnotes. Now, if you're a banker or someone who wants to get more in-depth into our finances, you're going to want to read the financial statements, which I also look at. One of the things since Cynthia's been here, we have a much better CAFER and much better grasp on our financials than we did when I first came here, and I appreciate what Cynthia does.
Thank you.
I have a couple more comments, too, when the Commissioners are...
Go ahead.
Okay. Couple more things. One is, this document's going to change next year. There's a new accounting pronouncement out there. There's just not a court case over PERS. We're going to put PERS in the financial statements. I'm not responsible for the two events being close together. We are running 110 miles an hour, I hope we are anyway, getting, PERS is going through a tremendous amount of information to meet the requirements of reporting pension liabilities on a more current basis. As you well know, our pension liabilities today are reported based on how much the bill you get from PERS. That's your pension liability, is the bill you get. And what this pronouncement is going to require, that in the countywide financial statements, comma, no effect on the budgetary statements. On the countywide financial statements, information related to the total liability that your pension obligation represents. And so there will be some changes, incorporating not just the pension liability, but the side accounts that were purchased when you issued your pension bonds. And so pretty significant change on the government-wide statements. Again, no effect on the budgetary statements. So that's what we have to look forward to next year. We also have forward, at least I have forward, look forward to next year. We had a retirement at the firm. No, it was not me, no such luck. We had another partner retire, and so we made some changes, and Ryan will actually, Pascarella will be assuming full responsibility for the fieldwork of the county. Now, you've seen him out here already anyway. And Devin is going to switch to take some of those other clients, the gentleman Tom Glowgaw, that stepped down from being a partner. From the county standpoint, I don't see, you're hardly going to wink a change. We're giving you our brightest, well, some of our brightest, I don't want to, but Ryan's been with the county a good number of years running the financial audit. So we're pleased to announce that he has been promoted to owner. I'm not sure he's as pleased as we are, but that did accomplish on January 1st. So that changed for going forward. The last thing I would like, question?
No.
Oh. The last thing I want to speak to is the Oregon Garden. I'll come back to that. We met with the person from accounting, Perry, back in December, showed him everything we have related to the garden, and we have files going all the way back to the bankruptcy. We have, we have prepared the tax returns every year since the bankruptcy, and we made available to him electronically, whichever way he wants, whatever he needs. Everything we have, he can have. There's nothing, there's nothing off-limits to help him work on getting the financial statements of the garden current and accurate. And so that offer was made, and we will not, like I said, withhold any information whatsoever. Unless we have to do significant work, you're not going to get a bill for it either. He can just work in our office as he needs to.
So Commissioner, you have a question?
Well, I was just, to be clear, in answer to a question I had about an audit just initiated, and I was asking Chuck how difficult it was going to be, and then, and so he answered it without everybody hearing the question, but I think it'd be a little bit challenging, but he seems like it's all under control.
It can be done, but it's going to take time.
So the financial statements for the garden are not current right now? So what happened there?
There wasn't an annual audit really done in this time, so I'm just trying to get, I want to get back to, you know, a firm picture, a firm base to really, really start from. And talking to Chuck, it starts with the bankruptcy, so we'll build it up, and I'd like to know when we're done, to right now, everything's square. Not that I don't think it is, but I want to know.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Commissioner Carlson, I believe that the revenues and expenditures, which are not as significant as they once were as they flow through the garden, are accurately portrayed on the tax return. We don't audit those, but I have confidence in those. What hasn't been looked at in a number of years is exactly what assets the garden owns, and getting our arms around the liabilities, particularly the notes that were written 10, 11, 12 years ago to individuals. Some of those have been forgiven, some of those, I'm not sure where they are. And so really, those two things, nailing down exactly what the foundation owns. There's been some assets that have been discarded, and there's been some new ones purchased, et cetera. And then really getting our arms, I mean, you can get your arm around the bond liability, but there's still, and I'm off the top of my head, approximately a million dollars of these notes that were issued 10, 10 or more years ago.
Interesting. Anything?
I'm good.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
One of the things you didn't say much about, and it's the next year, and that's with PERS liability, which will go on our financial statements. Could you say a little bit about how that's going to look? Because it's going to be significant liability, and how the side accounts, how are people going to understand that?
John, I wish I totally understood that. We are actually going to spend next Monday, half the day, working through that, trying to get our arms around it. PERS has been tasked with coming up with the liability, and you may say that's fairly simple, but they have to do it on an employer-by-employer basis within the pool. What I don't have my arms around, and I am very interested in, is exactly what kind of information can we present related to the side accounts? I'm very hopeful, see, the problem is that the side accounts aren't addressed at the national level. It's a little Oregon-unique. And right now, the number that we're carrying on the county's financial statements is a reduced reflection of the amount the county contributed, but does not reflect the current value that's available to shelter the county's requirement to make periodic payment.
But it does affect the liability.
Affects the liability, yes. But it's got a tail on it.
I think it's going to be very difficult for, yeah, it's going to be very difficult for the average reader to understand that relationship.
John, I couldn't disagree, I mean, I couldn't agree more. I'm hoping we can make it better than it is. Do you want to?
Well, I'll definitely be trying my best to make it as understandable as possible. But we do have to follow governmental accounting standards, and those aren't always easy to understand.
All right. So do we have a motion to approve the report?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve the fiscal year 2013-14 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the report. Is there any further discussion?
Nice one.
Just wanted to thank you for the presentation, and you thought we'd get a break, right? But they were able to give us a whole lot of information about this, and again, appreciate both of your efforts. And Cynthia, I'll add my congratulations to you for, again, work very well done. So those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. As we noted earlier in the meeting, we're removing the next two items from the action agenda, and we have roughly five minutes before the public hearing, four minutes. So why don't we take just a real quick break, and we'll, you can get set up if you want to, and we'll resume at 9:30. And we'll, you can get set up if you want to, and we'll resume at 9:30. All right. So we will resume our Wednesday meeting of the Marion County Board of Commissioners. It's still Wednesday, January 21st, and we're still in the Senator Hearing Room at Courthouse Square in Salem, Oregon. And it is now 9:30. So we are going to open a public hearing. This is under Public Works. And it's a public hearing to consider a proposed stormwater maintenance fee for the Marion County Stormwater Management Area. And we have Matt, how do you say it, Knudsen?
Knudsen.
Knudsen, okay. I never remember that. And Alan Haley is with us. And so you're going to give us an overview, looks like you have a PowerPoint presentation to kind of lay the background about why we're doing this, and how we got here, and how we got to the fee level that's proposed. And after that, then we will take comments from the public. So who's going to start? Alan, is that you?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Alan Haley, Public Works Director. We are here to talk about a stormwater fee for what's been designated as a stormwater maintenance area inside Marion County. Marion County is responsible for basic stormwater maintenance, and it's been correct, has been pointed out to us by many people, that we've been doing it for a very long time. The maintenance area that is in place at this point has been designated by DEQ, and is requiring us to put in additional services, enhanced services, as you would say. So we want to go through that, discuss that with you. Matt will be going through this PowerPoint, and then we'll be talking a little bit about the actual fee and how we got there.
All right. So the stormwater regulations that have started out in 2007, they were a permit required by the Environmental Protection Agency and the Department of Environmental Quality, both federal and state agencies, in which they defined a specific area called the stormwater management area, based off of census tract data. So urbanized area, high density areas. And in that permit, it was required six components, public involvement, interaction, community outreach, construction, erosion and sediment control, so preventing construction site runoff, post-construction runoff control. So once a site has been developed, ensuring that the runoff from that site is clean, and any kind of flow protection for flooding and flood mitigation is in place. And then also the stormwater maintenance of the system. These are required components. The county is required to have this permit in place, have a plan in place. And it comes with compliance fines of 10,000 to 25,000 per day, per violation. As the permit progresses, it ramps up, so you have to, the county has to continually do more. And that first five-year permit period has ended, and the county is in negotiations with DEQ to, for the next five-year permit cycle.
And Matt, before you move to the next slide, because I'm looking through, and maybe you were going to go through this, can you talk about what we did in the first five-year period? Were you going to do that?
Yes.
So the ordinances that we did, and the advisory committee, and all of that, so...
Yeah, so this is the map of the stormwater management area. And basically, what stormwater is, is when a natural or native landscape is developed, you no longer are able to infiltrate as much. And so because of the impervious surface, roadways, roofs, and then the lack of vegetation requires you to channelize the flow, and that flow runs off the property. And then the county and public areas take that flow and put it in catch basins, and pipe, and our ditch system. In our first five-year period, we have done a considerable amount of community outreach, working with both home builders and citizens on reducing pollutants. But also, we have, as Commissioner Carlson was saying, we've completed three separate ordinances that were required by the DEQ. Again, the first one is the construction erosion and sediment control ordinance, and that requires permitting for new construction. You might see silt fences and stuff like that to control pollution coming off of a developing site. And the post-construction, the county also falls under this, and I'll talk about it in a little bit, but post-construction runoff control, there's a permit now that requires new development to put in stuff like bioswales and detention basins and stuff like that. And then another ordinance was required by the DEQ, which was the illicit discharge ordinance, and that is basic dumping. So anti-dumping ordinances, you know, you can't dump oil into a catch basin or other pollutants. So those are the three ordinances that were completed. Also, as part of that is the good housekeeping and stormwater maintenance piece. And throughout the five-year process, we've had to ramp up, because of the requirements, we've had to ramp up street sweeping, catch basin cleaning, and stuff like that.
Right, and I don't want to belabor this process, but I think it's important, number one, because we spent quite a bit of time, and I didn't hear you talk about the advisory committee and working with the builders on this, which was an important part of it. And then the other part is that there was a discussion during that time about requiring all of the homeowners to do this type of work on their own, and keep a book.
Yes.
And then we had some discussion about how absolutely impractical that was to expect everyone to do that. And then that puts some burden on the county to do something. So could you talk about that?
Okay, for sure. So in the post-construction runoff ordinance, we worked with the Marion Water Quality Advisory Committee, which includes engineers, and then the Home Builders Association, as well as other organizations, and then just, and then as well as at-large members. But through the process of coming up with that ordinance, it was the process of an individual homeowner and groups of homeowners maintaining a single system of a detention basin, having to rent equipment to clean it out, having to maintain filters and stuff like that, became too daunting. And having the county do that was a solution that everybody, as the process kind of worked through, everybody agreed to, that that was the best option. And so with that, there are certain situations in which private development will put in some of these systems in the county right of way, and have easements for the county to maintain some of these systems.
Okay. And that's just for new construction that we're talking about right now?
That's for new construction, or if construction is redeveloped and new and expanded.
Okay. All right, thanks for that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Matt, can you go back to the map slide for a second? We went through that. Who set them up?
The Department of Environmental Quality. It was handed by the, basically, the information was handed by the U.S. Census Bureau to the DEQ, the Department of Environmental Quality and the EPA.
So just so I'm clear, the federal government, from someplace far away from here, sent this to us and said, here's what you have to do?
Yes.
Thank you.
If I could, I was going to make that same query. It's kind of important for, I think, the time we get through this, that by a lot of people's definition, those are not high-density areas, especially in the south and up north. And we've tried to deal with those specifically. I expect you'll get into that, Matt, but I just want to make note of it. No one would call that high-density.
And under what federal law is this?
It's stemming from the Clean Water Act, several court cases, and then we're at this point.
Okay, thank you.
So giving a little background on our system, in the East Salem Service District, the stormwater system in some places are between 30 and 50 years old. And that's important, because some of the lifespan of different infrastructure, such as a corrugated metal pipe running under a road, allowing water to go from one side to the next in the ditch, that piece of infrastructure has a 30-year lifespan. And so a considerable amount of, and that's just an example of some of the infrastructure that is in the system. And so with the lifespan of a lot of this infrastructure elapsing, we have a considerable amount of maintenance and improvement and protection of the infrastructure that is going to need to take place. Also, with EPA and DEQ requirements, that type of street sweeping, catch basin cleaning, culvert repair, those all increase. And the county has to increase the level of service. But also, as we were talking about with post-construction, there's new requirements for green infrastructure or low-impact development, treating stormwater coming off of new projects. So Auburn Road is a good example. There was a road widening and sidewalk improvement on that road. And as part of it, we were, the county, was required to put in pervious sidewalks, so sidewalks that allow water to infiltrate through the sidewalk and into the ground. And then the county was also required to put in catch basin filters. So filters that will actually filter out the stormwater coming off of the road with oil and sediment, coming through the catch basin, and then filtered. And with that, that requires new maintenance. If you have a filter, you have to clean it out and/or replace it. And so just added infrastructure that requires more maintenance.
I'd like to point out as well, as part of this 50-year-old system we have, we also have planning rules that have been followed throughout development, that have required developments to put in detention areas. Those detention areas are, for all practical purposes, not really owned by anyone. So the stormwater maintenance that has been performed, especially by Public Works, has not included any of these detention basins, because they're not part of the road system. So, and they're not necessarily attached to the East Salem drainage system. So now they are included in this overall area, and we will have to maintain those. And some of those are people's backyards, there are detention basins that the county has easements in, but no rights really to do any maintenance in them, so...
So Alan or Matt, when you're talking about an increase in the level of service, and you're talking about maintaining them, give an example of what you do now, or what you've been doing, in terms of the number of times you do it, or the area you do it, what the process looks like. I mean, just kind of give a day in the life, and then what it will look like under the new requirements, when you're saying that it ramps up.
Sure. An example would be street sweeping. A lot of our current street sweeping program is based off of leaf litter. That was the intent of a lot of, a lot of street sweeping programs, were to, during the fall, come through and clean up the streets, or if you have a spill, you clean up the streets. Now, with the new requirements from the DEQ, the street sweeping program has to focus on, prior to the first rain event, so in August or September, the county now has to go over every main intersection, every road. And so that just increases the frequency in which we're doing that type of maintenance. That continues throughout the year. The county will have to do that street sweeping program at certain critical points to prevent pollution from going into the storm system.
Okay. Any other questions on that? All right. Moving right along.
So one of the goals with this, with the process of developing this stormwater maintenance fee, was to create a clear, open, and fair process. And along with that, we, the county has had over 30 public meetings, whether it's advisory committee, meetings with the Board of Commissioners, in updates and work sessions. But we've also met with commercial customers, citizen stakeholders that were just interested in the process. And then organizations like the Salem Chamber of Commerce, the Home Builders Association, the Salem Association of Realtors, and the East Salem Suburban Neighborhood Association. Through this process, as Alan will touch on in a little bit, the fee has been molded and changed, and I think it'll show pretty significant change. But we just wanted to point out that we have had a back and forth with stakeholders throughout the entire process.
And Commissioners, as you know, the process also included meetings with yourselves and a couple, several work sessions that went through. Excuse me. We had a multitude of internal meetings to discuss the results of our work session meetings, and how we could improve upon the process. And that process obviously included coming here to today to, for a public hearing. One of the process issues we have, however, is that we've been trying to get mailers out to make sure people understood that this was happening, this fee was being proposed, and this hearing was going to be held. And try as we might to get two and a half weeks of notice, we didn't get that. The notice went out, and people received it probably around the 14th or 15th of January. So just to let you know, that there wasn't as much as we wanted. We definitely have people, we've had over a dozen responses from folks written. So the notice was received, but it's not as much time as we would have liked to have had for our process, for this process to happen. The budget in this case was really the topic of many of those work sessions. And I think we had pretty good instruction from the perspective of, let's not blow this up into a big program, and grow it and grow it, keep it as minimal as possible. And so we produced really a modest budget. When we first met, a lot of the fees, a lot of the services that we're going to have and going to be paid for, we included as part of this upcoming fee. And in talking with yourselves, and actually talking with citizens, coming back and kind of taking a look at what we were already providing, we were able to make some changes in this budget. The, next slide. So...
Before, Alan, before you get into the reducing the bill part of it, so the budget itself, some people may not think that $639,000 is modest, all right? So maybe, and it goes all the way up to 1.7 million in 1920, fiscal year 2019, 2020. But can you talk through, before you get there, back on the slide before, this budget is not totally reliant on fees that we're getting from folks, right? So there are electrical revenues in there, there are some other types of...
Yes, I'm...
So can you just speak to that?
I'm heading there. Yeah, I was going to go into the idea of what, the idea of the fee that we first put out as part of the process, and when we first met with commercial entities, was we were showing a $5 to $7 potential fee, just as an idea. We were throwing it out there. And the residential piece was in the neighborhood of 750. Let's go ahead and go back. So those numbers are what developed the categories that are on this sheet, which is the residential and single-family, multifamily, and commercial fees. So what we did as a group, and went back through, we looked at, we talked with the Salem Advisory Committee, and we looked at it as though that the monies that were already being spent in East Salem, doing the ditch cleaning that they contract with Public Works to do, represents about, a five-year average of about $78,000. And we basically agreed that that money should be contributed to this, because it's money that would already be spent. The same thing with the amount of money Public Works is putting into it, for some of the fall cleaning that we were doing, the catch basin clean that we would do... the fall cleaning that we were doing, the catch basin clean that we would do really once every few years, and this is another example of increased services, we're going to have to clean catch basins every year. So, but we're contributing another, what we've been doing for years is roughly about a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars throughout this area, not just East Salem, but it also covered some of the south area, some of the north area and obviously some of the area in the Fruitland area to the east. And then the amount of money since you looked at the first slide there, talking about two thousand and seven and moving forward with that first five-year period, developing those ordinances and the, basically administrative work that was going into this was being paid for really out of electrical revenues. So we came to that conclusion as well and we're contributing another hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred dollars in electrical revenue to this process, all in favor of lowering the bill, the fee to each of those folks that is going to be receiving basically the enhanced service level. And it's been pointed out to us in some of the communication that, well, we're sending this bill to East Salem, we are going to contribute those monies that we've been doing, split between the north area, south area, east area and East Salem for the level of service that those areas require. The enhanced areas where, which is really the more urbanized areas, which arguably is East Salem, is really where the enhanced services are going to be supplied and that's why this fee is basically pointing towards the East Salem Service District.
And if I look at the budget sheet that you have as attachment E, over a five-year period, the amount that you're going to collect from single-family residential, multifamily residential is just a little bit over half what the program costs are going to be over five years. So to kind of make a point that this, that the services that you're going to do are not entirely on the backs of the people that are living there, that there's, as you mentioned, road fund, electrical revenue, there's other funds that the county is providing to make the fee go from where we were originally talking about, where everything was based on the fee, to a more reasonable fee.
Correct. And it's, we also have an agreement from East Salem that we've been budgeting in East Salem roughly four hundred thousand dollars a year, not a year, every year, it's the same four hundred thousand dollars, for a detention basin in East Salem or in an area that affects East Salem that slows the water down from the south heading north. And that is still part of the plan, that is part of what this program is going to have to be. And the advisory committee there, in looking at the carryover that they have, has also said that they would contribute that money from the district to the stormwater management area, which also reduces the fee to the residents within, within East Salem. So that's a four hundred thousand dollar issue roughly in year five, as the program is currently laid out.
Yes.
Madam Chair, Matt, can you go back to the map again to maybe ask a question? I want to, so if I may, I'm going to stand up, Madam Chair, just point to the map.
Need to take a microphone with you if you talk, so.
Let me just ask a question that I'm going to go point. No, I'll just ask a question. Matt, I'm going to go up and point to an area that would be residential area in East Salem and then right across the street would be the City of Salem. And what I want you to tell me is what the person across the street is paying to the City of Salem in stormwater fees versus that person.
Okay. Sure, and I'll touch on, we'll touch on that in just a moment, but basically for a residential customer, the, the fee inside the ESSD, the stormwater management area, would be four dollars and fifty-five cents. That's a proposed rate as of today. And then in the City of Salem, it would be over ten dollars.
And how long has the person in the City of Salem been paying that fee?
It had, they've been paying that fee for the last few years and then it's, it's been increasing every year and then it will also increase to about fifteen dollars next year.
Yeah, it's been at least three to four years. I live in the City of Salem, it's on my water bill, I pay it every month, right, so.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Of course.
But it is going up to their proposed fifteen-dollar rate in the city.
Madam Chair. And if I, if I look at your budget here, you've got this fixed through two thousand and twenty. Ours is not increasing.
Ours is not increasing at this point. We have no proposal for that, but it's something that we would have to come back to you. What we don't have is the, the latest version from DEQ and EPA about what the increased requirements are going to be over the next five contract years, so to speak. In theory, we would have received that in two thousand and twelve, but we have not. So we do know there are some additional requirements coming, but what we're dealing with now is basically what DEQ has first put on us through that first five-year period and that's what we're going to put out there for services. So, and this is the, the budget that we think will manage those services.
Thank you.
So as Matt was saying, and I started off with that we were talking about a rate that was going to be somewhere between five and seven dollars and we've, we've now got it to the point where the, we went to a base EDU rate plus, or a base rate rather, plus an EDU rate, and EDU is an equivalent dwelling unit. So each account will pay a base rate, which is the two dollars. And then for the enhanced services, basically on a per EDU basis, that'll be two dollars and fifty-five cents. Sorry, two fifty-five is the base, two dollars for each EDU per month. And an EDU is, is described, and that's what this information packet was, it's on the screen here, which is on our web, is roughly three thousand square feet of impervious space. And then we'll have that, that kind of multiplies into commercials. So the amount of impervious space that a commercial has divided by three thousand is what develops the number of EDUs for a commercial or a non-residential customer. So we're able to get that five to seven dollars down, which, one of our largest customers is going to be the Shemekah Community College and that rate would have developed a fee in the neighborhood of around eighty-four or eighty-five thousand dollars. So that rate, under this scenario, is going to be roughly twenty-four thousand dollars. And we also offer and are putting in place a, for commercial units, a twenty-five percent discount to start with for the first couple of years, which basically brings that rate down to eighteen, eighteen thousand dollars. And then they can apply for, to continue that discount after that first two-year period, so. But it's important that we put that discount in. Shemekah has done a lot of work on their drainage and their parking lots, but others have as well. So what we want to do is give people a chance to let us know how much work that they've already done, so to, to basically mitigate the current stormwater. And that's basically that two-year window where that credit will be applied against, for these customers.
So going back to comparing those fees, I'm going to skip back one. And the example below is a, is a nine thousand square foot small office building. In the end, that nine thousand square foot small office building would pay eight dollars and fifty-five cents per month. And that's important for comparison sake on this next slide. That same commercial property in the City of Salem would pay eighteen dollars and seventy-four cents this year and next year they would pay twenty-five dollars a month. And the commercial property in the City of Kaiser would pay sixteen dollars and eight cents per month with the increase to seventeen forty-nine the next year. So a pretty significant difference for commercial. Also with, as we were saying, as I was saying before, with the City of, of Salem's residential rate, a, a pretty significant difference from the county's proposed four dollars and fifty-five cent rate. But the City of Kaiser's is about five dollars and thirty-six cents with an increase the next year as well.
Can I point out?
Well, I don't know this, but I'm hoping there's some rationale for that higher cost rather than just the ability to charge, is that there would be a higher service level, for example, in the City of Salem. Do you know that, Matt? If there is, would you tell us?
Definitely. They are on a, they're on a different permit than, than, than we are at the county. They have what they would call, we're phase two and they're phase one, they have a larger metropolitan area, a much larger system than, than the counties. And that's where that increase rate comes from. They have increased requirements that they have to, they, they have monitor, we don't have monitoring requirements and, and they do. And, and, and some of their cleaning frequencies are more, more, more comprehensive, more, more frequent.
So I know a few years ago, when we were over at MAPS, so that gives you the timeframe, not in Courthouse Square, Representative of the City of Salem came over to talk about this with us and what they were doing. And they were, I think, probably about the point that we are right now, where they were trying to figure out how to impose a fee on businesses. And one of the things that we, they, the concerns that were coming out is churches and, you know, other places where they just don't have an income stream and then how are they going to be able to pay these large amounts of money? Because it was in the tens of thousands of dollars, like you're talking about, if you have a large parking lot at a church and a big roof area and you use that to figure it out. And then they were talking about this credit process that they were going to use. I mean, it sounds a bit like the discount, except that they were talking about credits for work that was being done. And I remember asking the question, so if, in a home, if I made my roof into like a garden, right? So I don't have roof area, I have, you know, I planted like an entire garden on top of my roof and I have all pervious, I guess is what you call it, where it goes through, so my sidewalk and my driveway, I take everything out and I make it pervious, could I get my fee actually down to zero by doing that? And the answer was, well, no, because we have to have money in the budget to be able to fund the program. So I mean, there's, there is some relationship, I guess, to the work that you do, but then in the long run of things, there are still things that the county or the city has to do in terms of a street cleaning and that type of thing that has to be paid for somehow. So that was an interesting conversation, anyway, sticks in my head.
Yes, yes. And Commissioner Cameron, you pointed out that, you know, we, we are not increasing this rate as it has been in the city, but I did want to point out that that's because we've also, we've inflated the contributions from, from the gas tax and electrical revenue and the contributions directly from East Salem Service District, two percent a year to alleviate that. So it's, we're not putting that on the backs of the, of the customers.
So how the customer would receive the bill, essentially the majority of, of customers would receive the, the bill in the tax statement. This is a process that was settled on after understanding the, the total, the total expense, as Alan was saying, how we reduced parts of the way that the, the total bill was, or fee was reduced, was by using a process that was already in place with our accounting and administration. And that, that significantly reduced the, the fee to the, to the individual. And then, and then, so that would, they would receive that statement, majority would receive that statement annually. And, and then with nonprofits and other organizations, we're still in the process of figuring out exactly the, the methodology in which, or the frequency in which they would receive a bill, but it would be through a, potentially a separate process than the, the tax statements, because they, they would not receive those property tax statements.
This is a huge administrative savings. So we had a department specialist, three, who was going to be on board to help with this, as well as accounting staff, as well as our overall actual billing for AR, accounts receivable, and even providing it through a service and not through the county. But overall, it's in excess of about eighty thousand dollars in savings per year that we were able to eliminate by going through this process instead of going through an accounts receivable, you know, a regular billing, monthly billing process.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that was my question, was by going to the property tax statement versus the other options you looked at, we saved eighty thousand dollars.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that was a big discussion that we had in those work sessions was around whether or not we could encourage the City of Salem to entertain the idea of just putting it on the water bill like they do with the city residents. And they were reluctant to do that and there was a pretty big cost for doing that. And then we were going to have to hire some sort of a company that would send out bills monthly or quarterly or whatever, so there was, this actually streamlines it a lot. Appreciate your.
The city's system, even though their billing process is already in place, was going to be well over a hundred thousand dollars cost to the district, so to the stormwater area. It just was unreasonable.
All right, so moving forward, if this, if the proposed board order is, is approved, the, the property tax year starts in July of two thousand and fifteen. Most individuals receive their property tax statements October, November and the, the program would potentially start receiving revenue in, in November of two thousand and fifteen.
So with that.
There's one more map on my slideshow in the very back, is that?
That's the East Salem Service District?
Mm-hmm.
You want it? Okay.
Yeah, that probably would be useful to have up there.
Okay.
Pretty clear for people to see where, where the lines are.
Let you know, I believe you have in your packet, we have received roughly a dozen or so responses, emails. I think most of them have been answered, not necessarily to the pleasure of the quester, but certainly to the understanding of, of what the program is doing. At this point, we'll sit for questions.
Thank you, Alan. Madam Chair, if I may, questions?
Yes.
So one of the questions, before we get into some of the questions I have from the feedback that we got, and I think I've asked this before and we have legal counsel here to maybe help us and, and Matt, you, you maybe know, if we don't do this, I mean, there's, the options that are before us is, is try to find four hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars somewhere outside of this five dollar a month fee to fund this budget to do the work that we're talking about, right? That's one option.
That's one of the single-family dollar value.
Okay, great, okay. So if you add in the, if you add in the commercial, you're talking about another hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, so we're talking.
Six hundred and eleven thousand.
Six hundred and eleven thousand dollars is what we're looking at through a fee. That the federal government is shoving, in my opinion, shoving down our throats and I want to make that really clear and that's not about you. And I think you guys have done a great job in the process that I've been here for the last six months and seen how you've done this and really worked and got feedback from people to get this down to a minimum. And it just drives me crazy that we are sitting here because some guy in Washington, DC is saying, we're having to do this. And so, so the option is a six hundred and some odd thousand dollars. If we say, we're not going to do this, we say, no, we're, you go take Washington, DC and play it in Washington, DC and we're going to be Marion County and we're going to be great Americans and live our lives the way we want to live it. We don't do that, what happens? And can you maybe talk about some other communities that are stressed as a result of that?
Sure. If, if we, if we do not have the funding to, to complete the required components of the, of the permit and we were unable to do that, we would go through a compliance process with the, with the Department of Environmental Quality and actually it would probably be the EPA who, who would go through that compliance process. And that would, essentially, we would be given notice that within a certain period of time, if we don't, if we don't do what is required components, then we would receive a specific fine amount per day, per each violation. And there is, in, in the document alone, there's, there's well over thirty points of, that could be considered violations if we just, if we just didn't do them. So, you know, you, the lowest violation is ten thousand dollars per day, so I mean, it's a pretty significant amount. If, and as, and then as an example, I, I believe a good example would be, would be Clark County up in, up in the state of Washington. They decided to go their own route on just one piece of, of, of their permit, their construction requirements, their, sorry, their post-construction requirements. So they decided to go and have set different standards than, than what the, than, than what the state and the EPA would have liked. And. And they had a lawsuit that required them to pay well over $1 million. I believe that it was up to $3 million. And that was just a, this day, just an outside lawsuit, not even the EPA at that point. But the EPA would have continued with the violation.
Follow-up of me, so it was an environmental group that sued them?
Yes. Thank you.
Not to give ideas to those groups, but what, do we have any exposures here under--
Can I go in?
I was just asking--
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have any exposures under this proposal that worry you? I'm not going far enough, is what I'm trying to say.
No, no, I don't, I, the way that it's set up is that we meet our minimum standards and that is what we do. The, our current compliance, we're currently complying in any new permit requirements that we receive. If they, if we cannot, you know, if we cannot comply with the current, with the current funding, then we would have to come back to the board. But currently, we can comply with this, with this funding.
That's what I would hear. Thank you.
All right, so we promised people that they could come up and testify. So why don't we do that now? And then we'll have you come back up when they're done and we can answer any additional questions that come up. And I know Commissioner Cameron said he's got a couple of questions from the written testimony that was sent in that we will make part of the record here.
Great, thank you.
So Andrew Schmidt, chairperson of the Marion Water Quality Committee. If you would like to come up and introduce yourself and make any comments. Thank you for your patience.
Good morning. I am Andrew Schmidt. I am currently the chairperson with the Marion Water Quality Advisory Committee. And so I have a prepared statement on behalf of our committee. The Marion Water Quality Advisory Committee is an all-volunteer committee comprised of at-large members, which I am, and members that represent the Marion Soil and Water Conservation District, local watershed council, local home builders association, Marion County Agricultural Industry, and local land development. Our job as a committee is to represent the public's interests by advising Marion County staff regarding stormwater and water quality issues, in addition to providing input to the Marion County Board of Commissioners. All of our meetings are open to the public, and our meeting times, minutes, and more information is available online through Marion County Public Works Environmental Services. Since May of 2013, the Marion Water Quality Advisory Committee has been engaged with the Marion County environmental staff and has provided input and recommendations to staff and Marion County Board of Commissioners in regards to the proposed stormwater maintenance fee. Once again, I want to stress that we've been engaged since May of 2013 in this process. County staff has worked extremely hard over many months in regards to the stormwater maintenance fee. They have worked to ensure an accurate inventory of the existing stormwater infrastructure, identify future stormwater projects, refining the stormwater management budget, conducting extensive outreach in regards to this fee proposal, gathering information from other jurisdictions in regards to their stormwater fee, consulting internally with other departments to find ways to reduce budget costs, and conducting work sessions with the Marion County Board of Commissioners. The Marion Water Quality Advisory Committee unanimously supports a stormwater maintenance fee in the East Salem Service District. The fee would help ensure that all federal and state requirements are met through the implementation of Marion County Stormwater Management Plan. In addition, the stormwater maintenance fee would provide for the necessary maintenance, repairs, and upgrades of the stormwater infrastructure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Quick question.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you for your testimony. You're supportive of the fee. Are you supportive of the work that if the fee was not implemented, but the work got done, are you still supportive?
As a committee, we are heavily involved with the stormwater management plan, reviewing it. As Matt has indicated--
Right.
That plan is under review currently through DEQ. You know, so we're waiting to see what that comes back with that. But the work that Matt has outlined and as required is necessary work. So we definitely support that work, to ensure the water quality, that we're meeting all the federal and state requirements.
So just to clarify, the plan, the work plan is what you're supporting? And then to get that plan done, you're also in support of the fee?
Correct. As we have, as it has been proposed to us as a committee, the fee, we see the fee as necessary to implement that work as the budget has come before us.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for your service on the committee.
You're welcome.
All right, Phil Wright from Schumecada.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for having me to speak this morning. My name is Phil Wright. I'm the director of Facilities and-- Closer?
Yeah, a little bit closer.
Okay. My name is Phil Wright. I'm the director of Facilities and Operations and Capital Projects at Schumecada Community College. I'm also a professional civil engineer. I've been watching the development of this program for about a year as the process has been in progress. And I do want to thank the board for any previous efforts to help reduce the fee burden that the property owners in the stormwater region will incur. I think significant improvement has been made in that regard. Just to set the stage a little bit for Schumecada Community College, we're currently serving 16,500 students approximately at seven locations, and we currently hold about 300 acres of property across those seven locations. Sustainability is a primary component of the college's mission statement, and all the decisions the college makes gives considerations to sustainability as we make those decisions. Our students care deeply about sustainable issues. They're heavily invested in college initiatives, and they are also eager to learn more about how they can help promote sustainable development. Schumecada Community College is currently involved in several efforts to interweave sustainable curriculum into several of the programs, including the horticulture and environmental sciences and various other programs across the campus. And the college has positioned themselves as an educator and a demonstrator of sustainable design. And we believe our stormwater system that we have on campus is a good demonstration of that commitment that we've had. Since 2010, the college has invested approximately $630,000 in the stormwater system, just within the stormwater region we're looking at in the map there. That does not include all the other outreach campuses and efforts we've had at those locations. Amongst the list of projects that we've completed include a detention pond that was built that is an outdoor living laboratory that's used as part of our horticulture plant identification program. That pond contains approximately 30,000 plants of between 15 and 20 wetland species. When that project was built, the college gave full consideration to the maintenance costs and maintenance burdens which came along with that facility. And we did not make any adjustments to student tuition based on the installation or construction of that project that was incorporated into our planning and maintenance efforts across the campus. Additional projects which we've completed include the yellow parking lot on the north campus, which has an underground detention and treatment facility. We've also reconstructed our brown parking lot, which contains bioswales at the perimeter. The college is also under agreement with Marion County to provide a two-to-one mitigation ratio to help the college regain capacity and detention to cover projects which would have been constructed prior to the current code requirements. So the college has made a strong effort towards improving in the stormwater quality and the detention capacity for the college. We feel that the detention, excuse me, the, we feel that the program under discussion is going to create a deterrent to the college's own stormwater efforts. It's certainly going to come at a cost to the stormwater projects which the college has planned. We have several parking lot reconstructions which have been planned, of course, the funding for which would be coming from the same sources that would be going to these fees. And it would possibly come at a cost to students as well at a time when the college is taking a lot of efforts to control tuition and avoid raising tuition fees on students. The proposed program currently allows for a 25% maximum credit. And I'm here to ask the board to approve this stormwater program, but only with a 100% credit for stormwater projects completed by the property owners. The college believes that stormwater treatment at the source, excuse me, is the most effective way to mitigate contaminants entering the stormwater system. And once those contaminants are in the system, the best you can hope for is dilution as opposed to actual removal of those contaminants. The college has shown that they are committed to continuing to reduce contaminants and improve stormwater quality that exits the campus property. In closing, the college has expressed a willingness and eagerness, both as an educator and in the development of our facilities, to be a partner with the county in making serious improvements in stormwater quality in the Willamette Valley. But the current credit limit leaves too much opportunity for serious improvement on the table. The program needs to promote maximum investment at the contaminant source. And that completes my comments.
Questions? Thank you. Floyd Hindren. Is he the one that said he had to leave? Okay, so we'll wait for him to come back. Trying to read this, is it? Last name is Locke? Can't read the first name, I'm sorry. Kay, all right.
Kay. I'm just a resident. I own my own home. And I came here today to find out what this was about because I don't have internet. And the actual notice I received on January 16th, and, which didn't give you a lot of time to explore what this was all about. And I don't have internet, so I couldn't look up any of this information. So everything that I know about this, I learned just within the last hour. But I did make some notes, and I did go through my own bill and my own tax bill. And I looked at a City of Salem utility service fees and charges document that was put out by City of Salem, and speaking to the effective dates of 1-1, 2013 through 1-1, 2014, and the stormwater service charges. And basically, it says the same thing that they're saying here, that they are already charging stormwater services to customers within the city limits. And the fees are charged on impervious area charge and EDUs of equal 3,000 square feet of impervious areas on a monthly basis. And so the base fee per account in 2013 was $2.45, and currently, it's $4.89. And I looked on my bill, and I am actually being charged, excuse me, $6.60, but they call it a water-based fee. Also, they are already charging Marion County tax property statements on general government. Marion Soil and Water is being, is a fee of $5.60 that's already being charged on the tax bill. So I wrote down some notes. In this notice, it says that tenants will not have to pay for this increase. And actually, they will because any landlord, when they get this bill, they're going to raise their rent. And if you put this on the tax, on our tax bill, what's going to happen is the mortgage rates will have to go up, and then you're paying interest on that total mortgage payment every month. So it's not just $5 a month. It will be added into the total mortgage rate, and people will have to pay that. And so that's another deterrent to buying a house. And also, it's going to be harder to sell our houses because they're going to look at that, they're going to look at the tax bill, they're going to say, "Wow, why are you paying all this much, $60 more for storm drainage?" And I think that if we, if we go ahead and you have to absolutely do this charge, then I think that you should give rewards for people who, like somebody said up here about planting trees and being respectful of nature and doing things that you can do on your own property to improve the runoff. And, you know, and if you give people credit for paying their bill early, that will be an incentive. And when people pay their bill early, or if they pay the full amount, then they're going to see increased revenue just from that. Because a lot of people, they just don't pay their bill. And so I think that if you have some sort of reward program, that it'll be a little bit better to swallow. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Kay, Madam Chair, Kay, you mentioned a City of Salem water bill.
Yes.
Are you in the city?
I'm in the county.
But they get, they get their water from City of Salem.
So the--
I am in the county.
The fee that she talked about is not stormwater fee?
No, it's not a stormwater fee. It's the base rate for the water fee.
Thank you.
Actually, no, on the back of the bill, it does say that that is included in stormwater. And we do have street cleaners that come there. And so the streets are maintained by street cleaners.
Right, but that's from the county.
Yes.
That, so the county's paying for that, not the city? I get a water bill from the City of Salem too because I live in the city limits. And there's--
Right.
There's several lines on my water bill that are not on your water bill because I already pay the stormwater fee, as I mentioned earlier. So my guess is that what's on the back of the bill is just standard language because they're not going to have one form of a bill for county residents and a different form of the bill for other, for city residents. But the amount that's printed on my bill is higher because I pay the stormwater fee and have been for the City of Salem.
In this Exhibit 1, Page 3 of 6, City of Salem Utility Service Fees and Charges--
In this Exhibit 1, Page 3 of 6, City of Salem Utility Service Fees and Charges. This is about a five or six-page document, I only brought the one page. But it does include where, what area you live in, and what the base rates are, and what you're paying for. And I have to say, I'm kind of glad I live where I do, because I do get a lower rate. And I don't understand why they're charging, depending on where you live, you know, that amount.
That's a question for City of Salem Public Works. I know, I had a whole incident one time, I won't go into the details here, but it's a mystery to me, too, so.
Yeah, but it did, it went into great detail about what area and what they were charging for. And, so.
Yep, they've got a system.
Okay.
Thank you. And then Holly Sears, Salem Association of Realtors.
Good morning. My name is Holly Sears, and I am speaking on behalf of the approximately 700 members of the Salem Association of Realtors. And thank you for the opportunity to comment on this issue today. First, I'd like to mention that our association has been engaged in this issue for some time. I came into this position in April, so I know it's been since then, and certainly before that time. And we did have Mr. Knudsen come and speak to our Government Affairs Committee last summer to give us some more detail on, on this issue. And he gave us some background information, but it was on the previous fee proposal. We do appreciate him taking the time to do that. However, we were dismayed that we didn't hear about this new proposal, or the public hearing until it was posted, the agenda for this meeting was posted on the website. So as a result, we didn't have a lot of time to evaluate the new proposal. And, you know, although we do see that it has been scaled back significantly, and we do appreciate the boards and the county staff's effort to do that, our association generally opposes any new fees that have a substantial impact on businesses and add to the cost of owning a single-family residence, as this fee would do. So our association would like more time to discuss this new proposal, however, understanding that if this fee were to be considered for adoption today, we would like to put on the record that we are in opposition to it. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Questions?
No. Yeah, Madam Chair. Thank you, Holly. How much time do you need, and what would be the process?
Well, we would appreciate some more time to have county staff come back to our association and give us some more detail on this new, this presentation today was great, however, you know, we have a process that we go through to consider things such as this. And so we would just like more time, perhaps, for the county to come to our Government Affairs Committee and share the new proposal, so we can make a more informed decision.
When's your next meeting?
February 2nd.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Did Floyd Hindren, I didn't see anyone come back in. Person who was moving his car, all right, so we'll keep that open in case he comes. And Alan and Matt, if you would like to come forward again, and I know Commissioner Cameron had some questions in the printed testimony. And you did say that for, that you had actually responded to each one of these emails that we got from the department, so hopefully you'll remember what you said when you responded.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I've numbered these, because that's the easiest way for me to find them. The big concern is, I think, Page 4, the fourth document, maybe it was third, it must have been the third document, on the condo questions. How would it be applied to condominium complexes and
Sure.
Common area?
Do you want to answer that?
Good.
Okay. Essentially, the, what we were working with condos is there, the issue that was presented in the, in that email, was that the way that the condominiums would be billed currently would be, the base rate would be on every tax lot, and, and so that they, they feel that that is unfair for those individuals. How the, how we specifically bill them, we have not, with condominiums, we have not reached a specific conclusion yet, we were waiting until after the fee was passed. But essentially, what the issue is, is that a base, the base rate, the base rate for each tax lot would be applied, so individuals that own those tax lots would receive the base rate, plus the EDU rate, plus the common area they have. And so essentially, it's about a dollar, a dollar difference for the, for the individual, as compared to if they were a single-family dwelling, or something like that.
So just to, just to follow up, if I may, just to clarify, in a condominium, as a condominium owner, I'm getting a property tax statement for my specific property, but then also the common area gets a property tax statement, so they would have an assessment on theirs. And then that is typically, in the homeowners association dues divided up, so that's what you're trying to get to?
Yes, we're trying to make it so that it's fair across the board, each, each individual unit owner, and, and still ensuring that all impervious surface is accounted for.
So if I could ask, so is it a dollar more, or a dollar less than what a homeowner would
It's, it would be a dollar. Currently, the way that you would look at it in this, in this would be, it would be a dollar more. But that's, that's why post-adoption, we would ensure that, that, that they, we would look at that, and it would be a fair process, so that we could apply the fee the same way that, that any standard homeowner would have.
The reason for that was because each resident would receive the same bill that a single-family residence would get. But the association, is what you were saying, would then refer the amount of money that they had to pay back to their owners. So that would increase the owner's bill by roughly a dollar.
Okay.
Because of the association.
All right. Congratulations.
Okay, thank you. This one is on the ninth one back, and the question was, and I was curious your response, if you're going to add something to the property tax bill, one would assume that it has to be voted on by the people keeping in line with other items added to the property tax bill, and maybe council can, I want to hear what your response was, and
Let me glance at it so quickly here. So we have
Right. So inside the service district, we have the ability to go ahead, and this is a fee, it is not a tax. So inside the service district, we have the ability to, because of state law, the ability to assign a fee through, and collect it through the tax rolls. So that's the process where we're basically saving, by doing it this way, we're saving the $80,000 that would have otherwise increased the fee across the board for everyone. So it's, it's a process that inside the service district can work, you can't do it on the county, just because you're inside the county itself. It's because of the special district status. Does that make sense?
That's accurate. Okay, thank you. Just a comment on a tax and a fee, I know, I don't see much difference. They come out of my pocket, and the citizens' pockets, and we feed ourselves, I'm not going to make a comment, that other funds budget of the state of Oregon has grown hugely through fees. I don't know what it costs to go duck hunting for the day these days.
And I didn't mean to be small about that.
I know.
It is, it is an issue.
It's technicality.
It's a legal distinction between a tax and a fee.
Maybe, let's see, the 12th one. I think the comment on this one, Alan, was, this was, this would have been the last one in the packet, I believe, and I think it was about, yeah, the back page, Commissioner, it's two-sided, by the way, I know how much you appreciate two-sided. The basic question
I didn't see the other side, thank you.
The basic question, so we do not discharge water, rain, or any other source into the street or street drains, why would we be assessed for services that we don't use? And I don't know where this address is, but
It's on North Lancaster, and I'm actually meeting with this gentleman this afternoon. We've been missing one another for months. We first sent a letter to the department, I believe it was in March of last year
Oh, there it is.
that I did not receive. We asked him to resend the letter, which he did in November, and I visited the, actually, it's a church. I called and left a message and visited the church on two occasions, and was not able to reach them. And I found out why this morning, when I actually was able to talk to him on the phone. But he has other things that he does for the community in the mornings, so had I tried in the afternoon, I might have reached him. But however, I'm meeting with him this afternoon, and it's not so much about the stormwater fee, it's more about stormwater, and the issues that he's having on the property, and the potential that he's talking about for the several times that they have flooded. I want to find out what that's about, so, but it's, he does, for the record, he also protests the fee.
Thank you. Thanks, Alan. Thanks, Matt. Those are my questions.
So I do have one more question, and that is, with the regard to Shemekah, do, and maybe you have to get back to me with information, but how are other colleges handled? Now, I was thinking about Willamette, but they're going to say Willamette is no, they have a much higher tuition, and they could probably afford the fee. Willamette probably wouldn't say that, but Shemekah would say that. So I was thinking, maybe, like, how does, Lane Community College down in Eugene, my guess is they're probably going through the same thing that we are, how are they handling that? Maybe the school district, because there's a lot of schools, again, they're paid for by tax dollars, as opposed to private dollars, that have large parking lots, large roofs, trying to keep costs down. So
Sure.
Do you know anything off the top of your head that you can respond to?
Yeah, in our research, and I guess what the county has discovered with the City of Salem fee, is that public entities are treated the same as private. And so the rules apply the same across the board. Now, there may be specific agreements that are in place in some of these communities, but for the most part, schools, public institutions are treated the same as, as private and commercial. And so if, if, if the, some, the different credits vary across the, across Oregon, and some have no credits, like the City of Kaiser, and then, and some have larger credits than what we're proposing at 20, at 25%. But the basic premise is that everybody pays the fee equally to the system that's in place.
The other piece of that is, and I don't know, is Shemekah has done these actual detention projects on-site, and I don't believe that Salem-Kaiser has done that.
Right.
I don't know about Lynn Benton or the other colleges, but we could find out.
I'm just kind of curious. And is Chavez Middle School in the county? It is, right? And not in the city? Is Salem-Kaiser, or is it in the city limits? It's up north, near Silverton
Correct.
Road in the corner where you're at. I don't know if they actually annexed that or not.
I think that's in the city.
Okay, so that's, so the City of Salem would be pretty much, there are some schools, right, in the, in the county?
Yes.
So they're probably already paying the City of Salem, and are they going to have to pay for the additional space of the county? And have you had discussions with them?
Yeah, we, we met with the Salem Public Schools. And yes, they, they have experienced the fees in Salem and Kaiser. And with the addition of the schools in, that are in the Marion County area, that would be charged a fee, they, they understand that, that, that is
It's probably like Stevens and Auburn, and those
Yeah.
That are out on the east side, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. Right, Commissioner, did you have questions?
Not questions, I'll have some comments, and I could do it now or later.
Right, well, I think we need to
I do have a question, maybe.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, and maybe, maybe Phil can answer this later for me, but if, if, I wonder if there's anything that prevents Shemekah, so that our students can start to be educated on things that they're advocating for or against, if there's anything that would stop them from putting on their tuition a $1.45 per student for a stormwater fee, if they actually saw that on their tuition bill. I think with the discount, you said it would be $24,000 instead of $84,000 to Shemekah?
The new rate, based on our bill, would be 24,000 instead of the 84, 85, and they're discounted off of that would be around roughly a hair over $18,000.
Okay, so it's even lower than a $1.45 per student, if they itemize that on the bill, based on 16,500 students. So they'd actually see that stormwater fee on their tuition bill, so that they're getting educated towards life, when they get out of college, what things are going to happen to them, based on their great government they have.
I'll leave that to Phil. Certainly would be an option.
I see the representative of Shemekah, they have taken due note of your suggestion, and they will look into it and determine whether that's feasible or not. All right, so we have an opportunity now to determine what we want to do. We can just close the public hearing, and allow some more time to go back to the Realtors, or whatever. We can make a motion on it today, and after deliberations, what's the will of the board?
Well, maybe I do those comments, I will start with time. I'm not mad about it, but I'm a little disappointed, as long as we've worked on this, that sufficient notice didn't go out with time to really analyze and things like that. So I'm pretty, pretty clear that I want to extend it some period, at least for written comment, whether we want to open it up for oral testimony, I don't, I don't probably care, I just would like it to be available. And I'd also like that we get to see that prior to the, to the conclusion of this hearing, so we have time ourselves to, to think over the comments that have, that come in. So my general comments, you know, I would just like to vote no against this thing, and I scared the heck out of Public Works when I said that, and that's where they make sure I know all the fines and all this kind of thing. Probably won't go there, other than just to make a symbolic thing, I probably wouldn't do that either. But I'm looking that these fees be relevant, and I think they are. I'm, I'm really looking, I haven't heard enough about, that this system proposes some increase in water quality or control. Got some idea about county services rendered, and I can certainly make the case that it's got to be paid for. A kind of a summation, I'm looking for a minimal reasonable rate, a minimal area, and minimum compliance. And I'm sorry if that offends somebody, but that's how I feel about it. The alternative is just say no and take our chances.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I, I would agree with Commissioner Brentano on extension, and for written comment, as well as even maybe another public testimony, if people want to, because obviously, this is, this is something that doesn't require a vote of the people. We are going to make a decision here that impacts a large percentage of population. And I think we learned some good things today, from what we heard, and take those into consideration. And I'm, I'm, I know, Matt, when you came into my office six months ago, I said, I'm going to work my butt off to kind of minimize this issue, but I don't know, you're ever going to get me to vote for it. And I'm still, you know, one of those guys on the fence, because it's, it's, it just, it just frustrates me that we continue to get, and this is just one of many things, we can continue to get, other government bodies telling us what we have to do, and they don't give us any money to do it. And they put it on the backs of citizens as a fee, or tax, in my opinion. And so that's why I'm just really eager to hear more from other citizens, and give the Realtors some time to go back and discuss it, because I think if they look at what we've tried to do, we're being forced to do it, they'll see that we've done a really good job of, and thanks to staff, a really good job of trying to minimize the impact to the citizens of Marion County. So that's the good news in this bad news situation.
Very good. So how much did it cost you to send out the postcards, or whatever you sent out to the East Salem residents? Do you recall, Ball Park?
Total about $4,000.
$4,000? So do you think we could send out, and I think probably, I mean, the problem that we have is, if we open it up for public comment, we can ask the Statesman Journal to print an article, and then we can pray that a majority of people in there happen to read the article on the day that it's printed, if it's printed, or, and they did get a card with a short amount of notice, so it might be nice to send out another card, and it wouldn't have to be any different than the card that you sent, other than the open time for comment is extended, and then give it a date, so that they have a good two weeks or more, once they get it to respond. Does that sound like a good plan with the board? It's paying another $4,000, but I think that's something that we But I think that's something that we really ought to do. And then that would allow also time for you to visit with the Realtors. And you heard February 2nd is their next meeting. Are you open to having a presentation on February 2nd? I see a nodded head. Are you available on February 2nd?
I will make myself available.
He will make himself available. So see how easy that is? All right. And then if we could, let's see, if a postcard went out very soon, could we have this back on the board agenda February 18th? Does that work for people?
We probably need 10 days from start to finish. 10 days plus two weeks.
That's two weeks. Calculations being done.
Yeah, well, just based on what, how long it took us to get this card out.
So we could, or March 4th, that would be the next opportunity?
That would be great.
March 4th? Okay, let's bring it back on March 4th. Okay, so that should give plenty of time to get a card out, have at least two weeks for people to respond once they get the card. So anticipate that it takes the post office a very long time to deliver mail these days. It has to go all the way up to Portland, then it has to come back.
And honest, it wasn't the U.S. Postal Service.
Yeah, okay, well. It probably was that on top of the Public Works then, right?
In terms of our processing agent, yes. So, yeah, March 4th would be great.
I can tell you mail stories too, but I won't do that here. All right, so anything else for the... So we'd have a motion just to close the public hearing? And extend public comment? If the hearing's on March, what did we say, 4th? You could make the public comment through maybe that Monday? Would that work? By 5:00, something like that?
Sure. So are we extending the public hearing or are we closing?
We're going to close the public hearing, I think, and extend public comment. This is not, this is a legislative hearing, so it's not, it's not like a land use hearing where we have to go through notice and all of that for continuing. But we can, people can continue to provide information by email or letter. Or they can come at public comment during the hearing at any time in the next two months, three months.
I'm sorry, so for clarification, are we scheduling a board item on March 4th or a public hearing on 4th?
Yes, that's my preference. Is that okay with you? If it comes back as an action item as opposed to a public hearing again?
Just a clarification, Madam Chair. What's the card going to say?
That's what we're determining right now.
Right, exactly. It's going to say whatever we say right now.
If we're going to have a public hearing or that we're simply extending the comment period?
I would like to make it, let people talk as much as they need to.
So you want to have another public hearing on March 4th?
Absolutely.
Or just extend it and accept oral testimony on that date and then set that as the...
We can still take action on that date, can't we? Even if it's not a public hearing? So a public hearing and an action item, right.
That would be more clear.
So we'd continue the public hearing then? And then have a public hearing on March 4th?
The only clarification that I want to ask, Matt, I want to make sure that we're not going to get $10,000 a day fines between now and then because we're allowing the people to come in and voice their opinion.
No, we should not.
Okay, thank you.
We weren't intending to collect the fee until July 1 anyway, right? We were going to impose the fee on July 1. Is that what I saw?
Correct.
And then the revenue comes in November or something like that. So I think a few weeks is not going to derail us.
And we're in the process that is being required by DEQ. So it's, we are moving forward.
Right, it has to be a public process.
Correct.
Correct. All right, anything else on this? So do you know what your motion?
Well, I don't know the quite deal. But Madam Chair, make a motion that we continue this public hearing having to do with, what's official name? Stormwater fees to March 4th, did you say?
Yep.
Where we'll accept oral and written testimony.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing until March 4th. And we will also accept written testimony up through March 4th? Is that the idea? So we won't cut it off?
Probably March 3rd, or if I could change that a little bit to get some time to get them in.
All right, March 3rd?
If that's all right with everyone.
I said March 2nd at 5:00 because that gives them Tuesday to actually copy it.
That would be preferred.
All right, fine.
That's for the written.
For the written, right. So that goes on the postcard, 5:00, March 2nd. And then the public hearing would be continued at 9:30 on March 4th.
Correct.
Okay. Everybody understand the motion? Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All right, that's approved. I want to thank everyone who came today, who testified, people that came just for their own edification or moral support or whatever. And appreciate all the work that's gone into this by advisory committee members and staff. Recognize that this is not a fun process. I've read the comments and I don't enjoy paying the fee to the City of Salem. And I don't enjoy imposing a fee on the citizens of Marion County. But we are where we are. So we'll move forward and try to make this as tolerable as we can given the directives that we have from the federal government to do this. Thank you all. So that concludes our business before Marion County and Board of Commissioners today. I'll go ahead and read the Wednesday to Wednesday calendar. It's Wednesday, January 21st still. We just completed our board session here in the Senator Hearing Room. And at 10:45, so we're about 12 minutes late for that, we have an interview for Marion County Business Services Director. So we'll head up there shortly. At 12:30 is the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council Steering Committee. That's held in the Silverton Conference Room, 5th floor here at Courthouse Square. On Thursday, tomorrow, at 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., our interviews for Marion County Business Services Director, also in the Silverton Conference Room, 5th floor, Courthouse Square. That will be followed at 10:30 by an executive session pursuant to ORS 192-662I in the Silverton Conference Room. Then Friday at 10:30 a.m., this is January 23rd, is a meeting of the Mid-Willamette Jobs Council. That's at the Insight Boardroom, 626 High Street Northeast, Suite 305 in Salem. Monday, January 26th at 8:30 is the Board of Commissioners' calendar review at the Silverton Conference Room, 5th floor, Courthouse Square, followed by management update at 9:00 a.m., same place. Tuesday at 8:30, January 27th, is a meeting of the Community Corrections Board, also in the Silverton Conference Room. Then Tuesday evening, January 27th at 6:30 p.m., is a meeting of the Solid Waste Management Advisory Council. And that is in the Senator Hearing Room here at Courthouse Square. Then a week from today, January 28th at 9:00 a.m., we will be back for our regular Wednesday board session here in the Senator Hearing Room. And that will be followed at 6:00 p.m. by the annual meeting of the Mid-Willamette Valley Council of Governments, or COG. That will be held at the Red Lion Hotel, 3301 Market Street Northeast in Salem. So anything else for the good of the order?
We're very busy.
We're very late.
We're late already.
All right, so we will adjourn.